And sitting down in the studio with me, Glenn Collier, how you doing?
Oh, doing fine. I think I found the right place.
Did you?
Yeah, the fog is a little bit heavy.
And everything's covered in white.
Ah, yeah. But we're ready.
You have a good Christmas?
You bet.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Uh, I had some dirty pictures on Santa Claus.
Uh-oh.
And so he made up for it.
Oh, yes, blackmailing Santa Claus always helps when you have those. Did you catch him kissing, kissing mama? Is that what it is? Or the other way around? So, uh, you had a meeting yesterday, right? No?
Yes, we did. Sure did. It was not, uh, complete.
Not a complete meeting?
I want the public to know that we did miss Royce very much. Uh, unfortunately, his wife has, uh, Robbie had fell on some steps.
Oh, no.
And fractured her back. And therefore, number one in his life and our understanding is, hey, Royce, we missed you. We sure do hope that Robbie gets along better.
Yes, that's, I, hmm, you know, your back connects everything in your body.
Oh, yeah.
It's that center pathway from your, from your brain to everything else. And if you hurt that, ooh, that's scary.
But we did well.
Okay.
We covered some things, a lot of things that can unless you have the full, um, commission sitting. But we, we did, did well. One of the big thing, Kevin, can you imagine what it would be like to be, uh, in charge of emergency management, fire and rescue? And, uh, right, we're Mero heading up road.
Yes, the road department and the rescue, uh, emergency rescue, they got hit hard in the last 10 days.
Yes, they have.
Lots of people, uh, decided to, to try to chance the weather, uh, or they got snowed in in places that they didn't expect to get snowed in. And that, and that's one of the things, we didn't, this is New Mexico, this stuff doesn't happen. You know, we don't get two foot of snow with six foot drifts.
Well, they did.
And it did happen. And I think, uh, people underestimated the weather. Uh, we talked about it coming in and even I was like, nah, it's not going to happen this way, even though I gave the weather. I was like, oh, they're expecting, you know, 18 inches. And I'm like, nah, that ain't going to happen. And it happened. And, uh, then there was people thinking, oh, I can drive in this. And we're not prepared to drive in this. We don't have enough training, uh, as, uh, normal New Mexicans to drive in this kind of weather. And, uh, so we get stuck in places. And then that means we're risking the lives of emergency uh, help and they're going out. And I know that, what was it? Sunday night, uh, went right in the middle of the storm, right in the middle of the blizzard. There were, uh, emergency vehicles out there helping tons of people. And even in places where emergency vehicles were getting stuck and, uh, three or four rigs trying to get people out and, and it's, and it, it's, uh, you know, almost life and death because it starts to get cold and those people get stuck out there. And we want to thank all the emergency, uh, uh, help that went out, all the people, all the volunteers and all the people with the, the county and the city that went out and helped people. And, and the people who decided to go out and get stuck, shame on you. You should have stayed home.
I think it might be well that we remember that Eddie County has 4,300 square miles to handle. So the road department is saying, gee, we need to prepare and repair roads.
Yeah.
Well, you can't find them.
Yeah, everything's covered in white.
And, uh, so emergency management takes all of their vehicles, goes through as much snow as possible to get isolated help.
Yeah.
To those people. Uh, we have a large, large number of people that live in the rural area. And, uh, I can tell you that the level of compassion is more important than what comes first.
Right.
And the first thing is our people. And there are some really isolated, Kevin, can you imagine not being able to have water or lights or get out of your driveway?
Yeah. And there was a lot of people in town who had that same situation. They were out of electricity. Their water froze and they couldn't get water. And, uh, and then because no electricity, the gas wouldn't come on. And, uh, so they were, they were stranded in their home and not be able to get out and their car was in the drift.
Well, at that point, I would like to commend the city of Artesia. Uh, under the leadership of our mayor, they have responded so well to take care of the roads the best that they can, the streets and the others. And I will say that, uh, Eddie County, in our protocol, in what we do, we have assisted them, they have assisted us. And that's the way we work in North Eddie County. We work together.
Together. Yeah, they, uh, and you don't know, I mean, I, I don't think people understand how much snow actually is out there. When you start scraping up a street, you know, let's say you go a mile just down Grand, for instance. You're just going down Grand to scraping up a, uh, a section of road that is 18 inches already in place, 18 inches deep. And you start scraping up a, uh, several feet of that. It piles up rather quickly and there's nowhere to go with that. There's no designated area to, to drop off a big, you know, four or five tons of snow. And so they, they went out there and they did their best and putting it in places to get it out of the way, clearing out as much as they possibly can, uh, to make the road safe for everybody. And I know that first couple of days, everybody was just shutting down, like everything shut down. It's like, oh, stores shut down. Everybody says, forget this, we're not even getting out because it's not safe and, uh, keeping people safe. And now the roads are clear and, and open and free, but we still got parking areas and alleys and stuff like that where people are still getting stuck. Just don't drive down those areas, people. Just don't do it.
Well, you see, people are important. The road they travel on is for them.
Yep.
And, uh, people come first. And we have addressed that issue. And, uh, commend all of those departments that have worked together. They continue to work, Kevin. They're really doing a beautiful job, but it's difficult.
Yes.
Uh, I hope and I know that in our formula, we will never discount compassion.
Right.
Can you imagine not going to the grocery store, not having any gas, water, electricity?
I can't imagine it.
And so I think that we need to focus on our people first. And let's see if we can take care of that. To this point, it's been an excellent, excellent piece of work.
Yeah. Now, um, the governor has, uh, she, she declared a state of emergency during that. Uh, did she declare any kind of like disaster relief or anything? Do you know of anything like that? Did you guys talk about that at all at the meeting?
Yeah. No, we did not. And, uh, have not really had certified, uh, response on her part. I'm not discounting her at all.
Right.
But, uh,
We just haven't heard anything?
Yeah, but sometimes in North New Mexico, they don't have too much, um, feeling of, for anybody that lives outside their city limits. So that's been our big problem. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But, but I was just listening to Mike's news. He was talking about, uh, the damages that were done, uh, across Eddie County with just the snow and, and, uh, the relief and of course, the amount of money that it, it, it took to, because a lot of these emergency relief people are getting paid to do this. And, uh, you know, they, they're working really hard out there and they deserve it. I mean, they're, they're not, and, and there was a lot of people who jumped in and volunteered and other stuff like that. And we thank them. But, um, all of that costs money, you know, the, the equipment, the, the fuel for the vehicles to go out and help people. And some of that, some of that money sometimes is not budgeted for because nobody's budgeting for a, the blizzard of 15, you know?
How could you budget for it, Kevin?
You can't budget for that. So that's why there's emergency, emergency relief funds available, uh, from the state. So I was just curious if you hadn't heard anything. So I guess we'll keep posting on that and find out if later if she decides to do something.
Well, yeah, and I think she's a little bit busy at the present time, too.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're being understanding about that. Most important thing that we all need to understand, no matter what the weather is, 911 call is very important, Kevin. And it's called Regional Emergency Dispatch Authority. And it's located in Artesia. So whenever we are trying our best right now, almost, hmm, $2 million to equip, uh, a station, not only here to upgrade the materials and the equipment, but we're also concerned that we take care of all of the areas that would be involved in them. So, uh, Rita, in the meeting, did make a presentation of the expense. And that expense for 911 is pretty, well, is pretty doggone necessary.
Yes.
It has to happen. Uh, we even have an instrument, and I pointed this out at the meeting. We even have, uh, a mechanism that can convert English to Spanish and Spanish to English.
That's awesome.
And, uh, you know, improvements like that have to come. Now, put on top of that, snow, fog, roads, can't find them. All of the other things that go with that is extremely important that 911 can still be answered. And it's done right here in Artesia, which includes, uh, at various times, all of Carlsbad also. So, uh,
And, and for people that, you know, 911 is, uh, is a quick reflex. But sometimes you might be in a situation where it's not quite an emergency. You know, you're like, I'm just, I just need to contact somebody, but it's not an emergency. So here's some non-emergency numbers where you can contact the Artesia Police Department. It's a non-emergency contact number, 746-5000. That's an easy number to remember. 5000, you know? And that's a non-emergency number. Of course, if it's an emergency number, the first thing they're going to tell you at 746-5000 is if this is an emergency, hang up and dial 911.
That's correct.
And then the other one is in Carlsbad. This is a non-emergency number for the police department. And that is 885-2111. That one's easy. Remember two and 111. So, so those are non-emergency numbers. So if you're in a situation, you're like, well, this is not quite an emergency. I can be patient. Um, but I need to contact somebody. Those are two numbers that you can call so that it will relieve, relieve the 911 lines for actual emergencies. So let's make sure those are actual emergencies first.
Well, that is thorough, uh, explanation, Kevin. I'm proud of you for that.
Thank you. I do try.
The whole goal is sure. But I think the most important thing is we do take care of people first. We are not discouraging you from calling 911.
Right.
We are merely saying to you, available for assistance, and that's 24/7.
24/7, 366.
Yeah, 366, overlap at that point. But I think it's really something that, uh, we can hold on to. No matter what the city is, no matter where they are, they are people. We take care of people. That's what happens.
All right, Glenn, we're going to take a little break and we'll be back with more about the meeting you guys had yesterday with the Eddie County Commission. And, uh, so stick around. Uh, we have Parenting Today's Team, Kim Commando, and our Fox News Business Report and Weather and News. Be right back.
Are your teens hanging out with the wrong crowd? Are the friends they've chosen making a rebel out of your otherwise angelic child? Hi, I'm Mark Gregston with Parenting Today's Teens. Well, if you could put some distance between your child and the slacker kids at school, everything would be okay, right? Not so fast. Your child's environment is rarely the culprit for bad behavior. Most of the time, your child has chosen to hang out with that crowd, just as much as they've chosen to hang out with him. So try to see below your child's choice of friends. Is he looking for acceptance? Is she trying to find something in that group she can't get it home? Let the crowd your kid hangs with be the catalyst for the pursuit of knowing your child's heart.
Want more encouragement from Mark Gregston? Read his devotional book for parents. You'll find it online at parentingtodaysteens.org.
Parenting Today's Teens is broadcast as a public service on KSVP and is presented by the Artesia Drug and Crime Coalition. For resources to become involved, call 703-0012.
You know what? Your smile is as unique as you are, and there are no two smiles alike. Sometimes this unique smile needs a little help. If you have sore or missing teeth and are just unhappy with your mouth, then it's time you come see me. Hi, I'm Dr. Pete Thompson, and for over 15 years, we've helped folks just like you smile again. Let us help you smile again. Here's how we're going to do it. First and foremost, we'll treat you with respect and courtesy. You're not a number, and we'll treat you like family. We have the most advanced technology available and have years of practical experience with complex, challenging dental procedures so that you can get all your dental work done right here in Portalis, and we keep you relaxed through your entire visit with IV sedation. Call our office today at 575-268-0014, or go to ThompsonSmiles.com. I'm Dr. Pete Thompson, and I've dedicated my practice to beautiful smiles and excellent dentistry.
Kim Commando here. With the Consumer Electronics Show underway, we're not going to miss covering the endless lines of new products. But at the same time, we're not going to forget about the rest of the world. So for CES reports, head over to commando.com, follow CES. Today, you have an important job, whether it's your business or home computers. Sometime in 2016, at the time you least expect it, your computer's hard drive has a high chance of failing. It could be sudden or over time, but either way, data's lost. Unless you do what I do every January. Set up and check your backups, all your files, all important data. Two basic rules. First, always back it up off-site to data servers safe from power failures, fires, thefts, earthquakes, tornadoes, and floods. Second, use a reputable firm. Full disclosure, I've been a spokesman for Carbonite Online Backup for years because they're the best. And what's more, today is my day to begin a new backup year and make certain all my data's safe. Regardless of who you use, join me today and get all the latest tech and CES news updated all the time at news.comando.com. That's K-O-M-A-N-D-O.
Did you know that each time you use public wifi, shop online, or give out your social security number at your doctor's office or the bank, you leave a trail of digital breadcrumbs? Thieves can use this digital information to steal your identity and take everything you own. LifeLock uses proprietary technology to detect signs that someone has picked up your breadcrumbs to take what's yours. And unlike free credit monitoring services that only alert you, LifeLock has a dedicated resolution staff to help clean things up if all those breadcrumbs get messy. No one can prevent all identity theft or monitor all transactions at all businesses, but with LifeLock, you can keep doing the things you do every day and feel better protected. Isn't it time to protect yourself from someone eating your financial lunch? Plans start at $9.99 a month. Call or visit lifelock.com now and be sure to use promo code KIM. That's K-I-M to save 10% on your membership. Call 1-800-417-3841. 1-800-417-3841. 1-800-417-3841.
From the Fox Business Network, stocks open lower with the Dow more than 200 points down. All 30 components of the Dow are in the red. Traders are grappling with two factors, concerns about China's economy as the country allows its currency, the yuan, to weaken. The other big problem, a nuclear test by North Korea that's adding to fears about political instability. December was a good month for people looking for jobs. U.S. private employers added the most new workers in a year last month. That was above economists' expectations. Chipotle has been hit by a grand jury subpoena. In papers released today, the chain disclosed that the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Central District of California is conducting a criminal investigation into an incident of neurovirus in Simi Valley, California. With the Fox Business Report, I'm Carol Zimmer.
This announcement is for every man tired of waking up multiple times a night to use the bathroom. By calling now, preferred customers can get a free bottle of Go Flow prostate. Go Flow helps to increase flow when you go and helps to stop it when you sleep. We challenge you to try your first bottle of Go Flow absolutely free, just pay shipping and processing. This is a limited time offer. Call now. Call 1-800-668-1341. That's 1-800-668-1341. 1-800-668-1341.
It's now time for your KSVP weather forecast. Even though this morning, starting out with a chance of freezing rain and patchy freezing fog, it'll be mostly cloudy with a high around 50, south winds about 10 miles per hour with a 40% chance of rain. Tonight, partly cloudy with a low around 31, southwest winds around 10 miles per hour. Tomorrow, mostly sunny with a high near 56, winds breezy at 15 miles per hour. And tomorrow night, partly cloudy with a low around 31, southwest winds at 15. For up to minute news and info, follow us on Facebook. You're listening to AM 990 KSVP. As for highs and lows, yesterday, the high was 73, the low was 25. A year ago today, the high was 52 and the low was 27. Across the Pecos Valley, still foggy out there. Sunrise was at 7:01. You didn't see it though because of the fog. Still looks like the sun's down. Where is the sun? And, uh, sunset will be at 5:06. Yeah, giving us 10 hours and 5 minutes of daytime. Twilight will end about 5:33. That's when it will get dark. Right now, across the Pecos Valley, 32 degrees and dense fog in Roswell. Carlsbad, light fog at 39 degrees. It was raining earlier. It doesn't look like anymore. And 30 degree, 32 degrees and dense fog in Artesia with, uh, not hardly any wind out there right now. Humidity's still 100%. It's now time for the news. Mike Jackson standing by. He's got the skinny of what's going on here in southeast New Mexico. So to the newsroom, Mike Jackson.
Well, thanks, Kevin, and good morning. This update is brought to you by J.S. Ward and Sun Insurance. New Mexico Secretary of Agriculture Jeff Witte will visit southeastern New Mexico this week to talk with dairy farmers and beef cattle ranchers impacted by the record snowstorm that hit the region late last month. Witte will join officials from New Mexico's Farm Service Agency at two informational meetings organized by Dairy Producers of New Mexico. The purpose of the meetings is to discuss disaster programs with dairy farmers as well as ranchers and other affected agricultural producers. They'll be in Roswell this morning at 11:30 at the Chavez Suite 4. The other meeting is set for Clovis.
They had some losses. Uh, we need to get those documented and start the process to help them, uh, begin recovery phase.
We spoke with Witte at length yesterday and we asked him what they are hoping to find out at the meetings.
You know what? We really need to get a handle on is, is what kinds of impacts, uh, each, each dairy or, or each cattle rancher or farmer has experienced with this storm. As we move through the recovery phase and, and, you know, we're always looking to that next phase and, and recovery is, is the next phase that, uh, we got, do we have cattle we need to take care of? Do we have, uh, mortality issues? And how, how many, what kinds of numbers are we going to be looking at for, for disposal purposes?
Witte also says there's an upside to this storm.
Bad as it is, you know, in the initial phases with, with what happened with the dairies and in some cases with cattle and, and sheep ranchers and some of the crops. This is putting a lot of moisture in, in the good old New Mexico earth and, and it's also going to provide an opportunity to capture some of that in, in our reservoirs and, and, and a lot of times the, the snow will actually insulate the ground and, and help that determination process get kicked off. So, you know, the, the, there's always upside and downside with any storm.
You can hear more from Witte by going to ksvpradio.com. Back with more after this. In other news this morning, the New Mexico State Game Commission met January 14th in Santa Fe to consider numerous matters, including proposed changes to the aquatic invasive species rule designed to prevent the spread of destructive zebra or quagga mussels to the state. Other agenda items include initial proposed dates and bag limits for migratory birds for the 2016-2017 hunting seasons. Consideration of the department's plan to verify the active duty or veteran status of those seeking a 50% discount on licenses, permits, and stamps as required under a newly enacted law and presentation of the department's priorities for the upcoming year. New Mexico Governor Susana Martinez is unveiling a $6.46 billion budget proposal that emphasizes increased spending on public education, law enforcement initiatives, and economic development programs. The Republican governor wants to increase spending by $282 million over last year. That represents a 3.7% expansion, about 101 million in new spending would go toward efforts to improve public education. Base fa, uh, base pay for public school teachers would rise by $2,000. Pay raises are also planned for prison guards, probation, and parole officers, state police, and child abuse care workers. New state expenses associated with the federal expansion of Medicaid would consume $69 million. Marita Noon of Energy Makes America Great says exported oil from the U.S. has left shores for the first time in decades.
It's very good news and the lifting of the oil export ban has immediately, uh, virtually eliminated the spread between, uh, WTI and Brent. So our U.S. producers are no longer penalized uh, by the discount they have to accept from refiners. They actually can sell their oil on the open market and we're seeing that Europe wants it. So that's a good thing.
Noon says the first shipment left Corpus Christi, Texas last week and the second shipment is set to leave sometime this week. Don't forget, we'll have high school basketball action for you tomorrow night around 6:00. Says the Bulldogs are taking on Grants in the Gallup Tournament. This update is brought to you by J.S. Ward and Sun Insurance.
And good morning, Artesia. The video portion of the show that is broadcast on ksvptv.com is brought to you by Artesia Ford Sales. Don't get just any used vehicle. Get a quality check Ford certified pre-owned vehicle from Artesia Ford Sales on First Street in Artesia. And continuing our discussion here in the studio, I have Glenn Collier with the Eddie County Commission. He's one of our commissioners and there are five commissioners on the committee, uh, on the commission.
You bet.
Yeah, an odd number, an odd group of people.
It's not us, it's just the number.
The number, right. And you were telling me that there's a, there's a series of meetings we need to educate the public about that are coming up so that in case the, the public wants to call, because they're called public hearings and the public should be at the hearing. And, uh, there's, uh, two of them for sure. And these are by the planning committee, is that correct?
Uh, and Planning Advisory Committee, yes. And, uh, I gave it to you.
Oh, okay. So I just, I just thought maybe we'd talk about what, you know, what are we talking about when we talk about planning? Are we talking about like infrastructure? Are we talking about roads? Are we just talking about budget? Are we talking about everything? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything. Okay, I'm covering it. Okay, good.
Well, the, yeah, manufactured housing is really where we're going at that point.
Yeah.
Which, let me, let me digress a moment. We were talking about stranded people in their homes and so forth.
In the first half, yeah.
But let me remind all of us that there are people who are homeless. They don't have a home. They don't have food. They don't have a stove. And I feel like that we, and I would certainly take that on as a, a job to do, is to make sure that those that are homeless are taken care of. They are human beings. No matter how, uh, what structure they're in or status they're in, they need water. They need to go to restaurants, all of the other things. And so we will, not immediately, but we need to look very hard at what can we do with those that are homeless.
Right.
And we have them out there right now.
Yeah.
Right now. Can you imagine not having a home?
No, I, I can't imagine. I've always had a house. I've always had a place. Yeah.
And, and I do too. I, that's what I remember.
Yeah.
But there are people that really, uh, are in that kind of a fix. And so compassion goes to them also. And I think it's important that, uh, we address that issue, do something for the homeless people. So that the next time, emergency management knows exactly where to take them.
Right.
That, that's been one of the problems, Kevin, that there are people that are stranded. Where do we take them? Where in Artesia would we take them?
Yeah. There's not really a shelter per se that is designed if, exactly for this kind of situation.
Yeah. So I think it's important that we go back and, and mention that simply because we want to take care of all of our people.
Yeah. Well, that's a good measure of, uh, society and, and how it works is, is that if you look at how it treats the youth, how it treats the elderly and how it treats the homeless, then you can measure that society and grade it.
But before we get onto those plans, and I want, I want to do that, but we did pass a resolution.
Aha.
Aha. And the resolution included some very important things at that point. We have 12 where asses in, in a, it says where at Eddie County, blah, blah, blah. So I want to give you germaine of what the resolution So I want to give you Jermaine of what the resolution called for.
Okay.
All right. Uh, agricultural production is a critical infrastructure as listed in the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and contributes significantly to the economy of Eddy County. All livestock producers have suffered losses due to adverse weather conditions, including death and sickness. In addition, the dairy producers have had to dispose of product due to the inability of being able to deliver and transport milk products to various terminals.
Oh, wow. So not only have they lost, uh, their, the cows, which, which are their, their personnel, in a way, they've also lost product like gallons of milk that went bad because they couldn't deliver it on a time of fashion.
That's it.
Wow.
So, you know, in our meeting, we did our dead level best to remember all aspects of what is really happening in Eddy County. Now, if you cannot, uh, envision this, I'll give you an illustration. Old Mill Industrial Park here in Artesia. It's a truck crowd.
Yes.
Okay. It was one lane.
Oh, wow.
So on the one end, a truck came, and on the other end, they came, and they were facing each other. So the one that drove in last had to back out about a mile to let the other one get a delivery. So I feel like that there is so many things that are in the background.
Yeah.
That make that thing possible. So those are the things we've been encountering to say the least.
Yeah.
And Eddy County Commission Board, uh, effective immediately does declare this as a recent snowfall blizzard constitutes official disaster in Eddy County. Therefore, we become eligible going through protocol to get those. So I did want to clarify that for you.
No, wow. Um, I, I was thinking about that the other day, like when you, when you clear off a path, because so much snow, you can only really clear off enough for one vehicle. Um, there's got to be a way. I don't know what it is, and I don't, somebody's much smarter than me is going to have to sit down and figure it out, and a bunch of people probably going to have to work it out, but to make certain roads one way. So it makes everything flow a little bit more efficiently, efficiently. And like I said, it's way beyond me, but it's just a thought that I have, a little seed I'm planting, is saying, well, wouldn't the odd number streets or even number streets or certain streets become, you know, it one way so that when you get on the road, you know, nobody's going to be coming your way and you can be safely and go travel when, when a situation like this happens, which it doesn't happen enough for us to, to do, but if it were to happen a lot like this, a lot, we had a lot of fall, a lot of snowfall, a lot of rainfall over the last year, so a lot of precipitation. But going back to the planning meetings, uh, planning, public hearing, uh, you're going to have one on January eleventh in Artesia at the Motor Vehicle Department.
At five P.
At five P M. And this is a planning meeting that's talk about Eddy County, the planning, infrastructure, other things like that.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
What is their response?
Yeah.
How do they see it? And I really want, uh, Artesia to respond to that. Simply because we have to live up to what is it, is official.
Right.
That, to provide that for them. So once again, we're sharing with the public, tell us what you see, tell us what you want at that point.
Especially after a situation like this blizzard, um, it's a good time because the notes are fresh. People are like, hey, you know, these, these are things that concern me, and I'd like to bring them up for discussion and, and see if there's anything we can do about them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are using our own building.
Yes.
So I think that that's important. Then on the twelfth, do you have that down?
Yeah, the twelfth, you're going to have it in Carlsbad. It's the same planning, public hearing, but it's in Carlsbad for the Carlsbad residents and those people here in south, south Eddy County. And it's going to be at the Administration Building in Carlsbad. And where's that at?
One, on Green Street.
On Green Street, okay.
Yeah, we'll see. Used to be the old Moncor Bank Building.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, you see, you know where that is. Yeah. And it's at one thirty.
At one thirty on that date, that's January twelve.
Commission Chambers.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's important at that point.
And then you guys are, you get an opportunity, uh, to go to Santa Fe on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth for the New Mexico Association of County. It's the county winter meeting, but it's the Mexico Association of Counties?
Yeah.
Winter meeting.
There's thirty three counties, Kevin. And, uh, obviously, we're the biggest one. We cover more miles. Uh, so our people, we're going to be there.
Very good.
Step up to it.
Now, what do you guys talk at this meeting? It's just like listen to what other counties are doing and, and issues and problems? I mean, what, what really happens at these meetings?
Well, it's just, um, uh, creating companionship, understanding what they're doing in San Juan County. Rio Riva or whatever it is. And, uh, I will digress and say this to you, that the state association holds in ultimate high regard, Eddy County. Not only do we produce the most money, but we also do it with grace and dignity. And as a member of the Board of Directors, I can vouch and say to you, we are respected and we are in leadership. So, yes, we all go to that one.
That's good.
It's very important.
Yeah. So at, at that meeting, you guys will discuss lots of things. So it's a networking thing, meeting other counties and the other thirty three counties represented or you and the other.
And they give out some awards and, you know, stuff like that. But I felt like the public needed to know that, uh, some of the officials would not be available during that period of time.
Okay.
But their office would be open.
Well, if you guys win an award or do something fantastic like that, like somebody recognizes us, let us know. We'd like to have that on the radio as soon as possible. Let people know about that and do a, and probably Mike wants to do a news story over something like that.
Sure.
Let us know what's happening. That's January eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, and the county commissioners will be, uh, away for, for those three days and in Santa Fe. So if you need to reach them, you'll have to do it by email or by phone.
Yeah. And remember, we don't have office space.
Right.
You know, we, we are individuals that are plugged in twenty four seven.
Right.
And I, and I am honored to have that title, and I do appreciate that very much. But sharing it with the public, come on, people, let's go and hear what needs to be done. If, uh, an ordinance is to be approved, I will not accept anything other than what the people want, not just us.
Right.
And, uh, I've always been that way, and I will be on this one too.
So attend those public hearings. Uh, the planning committee wants to meet with you, Planning and Advisory want to meet with you and hear what you have to say on January eleventh in Artesia at the Motor Vehicle Department, and that's at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
And then the other one's at one thirty on the next day, January twelfth, in Carlsbad at the Administration Building.
That is correct. You got it, Kevin.
Very good. Well, Glenn, anything else you want to add before we go? We just got a minute or so.
Well, I tell you what. I hope that we get warm today somewhere. And, uh, I'm looking forward to being careful. So I want to say to all of our people, please be courteous, please be kind to, understanding of, and we're terrible drivers anyway.
Yes, we are.
New Mexico is horrible in their driving.
Well, I'm looking at the hourly breakdown of the weather, and this is what they predict. About ten o'clock is when the fog will dispense and the sun will peek through. It won't, it will still be cloudy throughout the day, but it's going to peek through. And we're thinking that that's about when the humidity will drop. So that's, that's for sure when the fog will dispense. And let's see, the temperatures will raise, uh, just ever so slightly. We're looking at forty eight degrees by two o'clock today. Um, so I don't think it's going to be absolutely too bright today and too warm, but tomorrow, we're looking at fifty two degrees and sunny, so.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so we might get some melt happening tomorrow. So if you don't know if your roof's leaking over the next couple of days, you will discover whether it's leaking or not.
And before we end, I want to assure the public, uh, that I will address this issue about homeless, uh, isolated dwellings that we have in Eddy County. And make sure that we observe that and make a plan for that. I think it's so important that we equalize our compassion to everyone.
Absolutely.
That's important.
All right. Well, thank you, Glenn, for coming in and talking to us this morning about, uh, things going on at the County Commission. And of course, the public hearings around the corner, we'll make sure we get that on our community calendar, let people know about it.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
All right.